Good evening. Welcome to the six P M. City Council meeting of July fifteenth, twenty twenty five. There must be something going on in here. Please note that all council members are present. If you would please rise, Vice Chair Hyer.
She just please rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please take a moment of silence with me. Thank you. Any acknowledgements from our council members? No?
Just real quick, I know we'll talk about it a lot over the next few weeks, but or maybe we won't because we don't have very many meetings. But I've already I went by the Pioneer, the Spence Echo Pioneer Stadium this morning and it's looking great. And I know the city does a lot of work and there's a lot of volunteer hours and just to get that thing ready to go. So thank you to all of the city employees who are working to make that place as awesome as it is.
Any others? All right, we'll move on. There is a request to be on the agenda, and I think I will turn the time over to Mayor Nadolsky.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the council, members of council staff, members of my administration, and to all of the members who have gathered here tonight. This is a momentous occasion on the history of leadership in the Ogden Fire Department as clearly made as made clear by the number of people that are here today. As I look in the crowd, I see a number of community leaders. I see leaders within the fire service, both within our own fire department, but also within neighboring fire jurisdictions. I see leaders within our police department signaling the number amount of support there is for the recommendation before you tonight for Michael Slater to replace a man who has brought us to a point of excellence, who has brought the fire department of Ogden City to the ultimate peak of greatness. I don't bring you this recommendation lightly. I bring you this recommendation after a national search, after a very thorough interview process, including independent members of my administration and the community who have looked at the applicants both in-house, in-state, and out-of-state. And I want to tell you, one of the things that I learned through that process is that this department and this city is a place of desire, a place that people want to be and a place that people want to serve, and that the best and the brightest in this country and in this state and in this department applied to be a part of leading it. They did that for a reason. They did that because they believe in this city and in this department. It means they believe in the men and women who have brought us to this point, including a chief who has overseen this department for many, many years and has helped to drive greatness. In this process, I also learned that the men and women of the Ogden Fire Department who have every single day contributed to the point of excellence stand ready to continue to work their guts out for this city and for each other, for this department. There is a culture and a standard in this department that I have the great fortune of inheriting and now stewarding that does not settle for less. There is a standard of performance that I take very seriously and that when I look to who I want to appoint to be the next police chief and to put before you for your consideration, I'm very mindful of the culture that we inherit and the culture that we will lead moving forward. I am really proud to say that we have a culture that likes to work, that we have a culture that attracts the best, that we have a culture that refuses to be second best. You guys, it's not easy serving in Ogden City. This is a busy city. There's hard challenges, hard issues. When you're in this job, you actually become a lot more privy to what those challenges are every day and how frequent they are. It takes an incredible department made of incredible men and women showing up every single day at their best in that moment, time after time after time, to have the kind of department that we do. So when I recommend Mike Slater as my next police chief and yours and everybody's in this room.
You better rank him the fire chief.
What I said, I must say, police chief. Sorry, I'm looking over seeing my police chief over here. Mike's back here. I'm gonna stop looking left. He's got this terrible-looking grin all the time.
You were on a roll, sorry.
When I recommend Mike Slater to be our fire chief, I'm not just recommending mine, I'm recommending yours and everybody's in this room and everybody in this city. This is an incredible moment in the history of this department. I cannot wait to take this department to the next level alongside this chief. We all owe an incredible amount of gratitude to Mike Matthew. He is a legend in the fire service, and that continued to come up in the interviews as well from external candidates. He's well-known in the industry, both in the state and throughout the country. He is an industry leader. I also bring to you Mike Slater, who is also an industry leader. Mike Matthew didn't achieve greatness by himself. He did it with thoughtful leaders, driven leaders behind him at every level of this department. Mike Slater is a man who has a high standard of performance. Mike Slater does not settle for anything but the best. Mike Slater is a winner. Mike Slater is connected and known throughout the industry. And when I asked him why Ogden, and you can ask him the same, and you'll probably find out in his remarks, he is committed to this city more than any city in the world, and he has had opportunities outside the city, and he has foregone those opportunities for us, you guys. When I ask him, what do you want your legacy to be? He has his own ideas. He wants to build on the fundamental greatness that we have already to continue to achieve, to continue to drive and to thrive. When we, when I recommend a candidate from inside the department, I'm mindful of the fact that are we going to be stuck in what we've always been doing? Or are we going to continue to build on what we've always been? I bring you Mike Slater because he is the leader that the men and women of this department will follow, as evidenced by the support from the union. They have put their vote of support and confidence behind this man for a reason because they have seen the way he serves in the moment in every position within this department as he made his way to the top. They know the level and the standard that they are getting when they see him. They know that he cares deeply about them. They know that he will serve them just as much as they serve him. This is a man of deep gratitude, a deep love, not just for the city, but for the men and women of this department, and that's what we need in our leader. That's what Mike Slater brings to you every day. He is a brilliant thinker. He is a driver and an innovator. He is a leader within this service and within this department. I have absolutely no hesitation whatsoever recommending Mike Slater to be the next fire chief of the Ogden Fire Department, and I look forward to the greatness ahead. But I can't make this recommendation without looking backward at the greatness that we've enjoyed. Mike Matthew cannot be thanked enough. Is he back here? Here, here. It's my honor to be the mayor who got to serve alongside Mike Matthew, and it's my honor tonight to be the mayor that gets to recommend the successor to Mike Matthew. It is my deepest honor to recommend Mike Slater to be our next fire chief. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Any questions for the mayor before we move on, before we, all right?
Nope.
All right, we have.
Are you ready for a motion?
Yeah, as long as there's no other questions.
Yep. Well, it would be my honor to make a motion to appoint Michael T. Slater as the fire chief of Ogden City.
A second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Chaburka and second by Councilmember Blair Graff, Hyer Myers, and Richie. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Blair.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Chaburka.
Aye.
Councilmember Graff.
Aye.
Councilmember Myers.
Aye.
Councilmember Richie.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hyer.
Aye.
Chair White.
Yes, that passes. Congratulations. Gee, I think you need to get sworn in here, so. Yeah.
You'll raise your right hand. I solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Utah.
The Constitution of the State.
And I will discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you. I guess this is my point in time to talk, I guess.
Please.
I kind of wrote some stuff down and I kind of forgot it all. And I'm overwhelmed at the support from my, my family, my loved ones, my friends, retired guys, right, my partners on the, on the truck, police department, as much as that pains me to say, their support, and my family members. I, I want to thank the council for their vote of confidence in me, and I want to thank Mayor Brown and Mayor Nadolsky for their faith and confidence in me. It's, it's not lost on me that early this morning, we had a fatal fire. And our men and women, the very crew that's here today responded on that, and I'm proud. They had a four-minute response time, two minutes to get water on fire, six minutes to pull that individual out of a structure, and he was then out the hospital immediately. They gave that individual every chance they could of survival. But it's not lost on me that we need to dig deep into that call as I thought today, getting ready for this, this and many other things that happened today. Like, we owe our community the best, and you have my promise that I will give you the best, that I work tirelessly every single day to make sure that we stay on this track that Mike Matthew put us on. I want to thank my dad, who is here today, for teaching me integrity and giving me a work ethic. I apologize. I, I want to thank my kids for the support that they give me and to tell them how proud I am of them for what they've turned into in this world. I want to thank Mike Matthew for always being there for me, for being my, my mentor and my dear friend and the many lunch dates at the pizzeria. And those are going to continue to happen. He doesn't think so, but they will. And I want to thank my beautiful wife, who is very, very supportive of me and my career. Just, just a few weeks ago, we were at Bear Lake on a family vacation. My oldest son, who's here today, proposed to his girlfriend. A few short hours later, the Ninth Street Fire happened, and my beautiful wife, who is so very supportive, looked at me and said, you gotta go, like, I've gotta go. And so, one in the morning, I leave Bear Lake. I won't tell you how long it took me to get here because there's some police officers in the room. But I showed up on that Ninth Street Fire, and there stands Chief Mike Matthew and two fantastic battalions. He's Pat McFarland, who's hiding in the corner, and Eddie Graham, sitting in the command vehicle protecting these homes. And I'm proud to say I got to work those men and women, and I'm extremely proud of that organization, this organization. Our strength lies in our people and the right people. And I am confident we have the right people in our organization to continue to lead this department forward. I feel blessed to be a part of this city. It's, it's my home city. I drive over the bi-dock every day at five-thirty in the morning to go to the gym. Sometimes I see Councilmember Graff there lifting all the weights, and I just look at this beautiful city, the mountains, the cranes, the temple, the buildings, and I'm just so very proud to work in this city. And I can promise you that I give my all every day to make sure that our community is safe and protected and that our firefighters are the best, highly-trained individuals that will perform with excellence that Chief Matthew instilled in this department. I feel blessed to have served in so many capacities in this organization. And the road ahead is bright. It was, it was built on a strong foundation. I walked into this organization right out of high school in nineteen ninety-seven as a reservist, and Mike Matthew hired me as a reservist. I still remember that day. And then he hired me full-time. My very first shift was Christmas Eve in nineteen ninety-nine. It was my very first shift, and I always wondered why he made me work on Christmas Eve, but I'm sure there was somebody that had family that had to go home, so. Yeah, and I, I look forward to what, what this department can become. I, I had an event that happened to me today, and it, I was getting ready to go to Lisa Bringer Hof's retirement. An amazing lady who dedicated her career to the service or to the city. And a Mr. Jerry Herup and a Lowell Marriott Herup walked into the station, and they gave me this article. It was an article written in the Standard Examiner a long, long time ago about the valued early-day firemen. And it talks about how in nineteen forty-eight, the Pioneer Fire Station was dedicated. And so, as I thought of the future and I thought of the path going forward, I read this paragraph. "In the early eighteen-seventies, the city bought a hand pumper and fire hose." I took this, this, this gentleman and his son, I think he's eighty-two, eighty-three years old, through our station and showed them our artillery truck. It's, it's a lot bigger than a hand pumper and a fire hose. "As a result of fire nine, August ninth of eighteen seventy-three, in which ten stores on Main Street were deployed or destroyed, a fire brigade was organized in December of eighteen seventy-four." No, no better moment for these two men to walk into my life, to walk into the station, to tell me about the past as we move into the future. So I'm, I'm so grateful, and I know I missed something, but I, I look at the fire chiefs and firefighters from across the county and different counties and neighbors and friends and people that I've worked with and worked for, and I love them all. And I will lead this city with love, and I will lead this organization with love. Love for our employees, love for our community, and love for our city. And I just, again, want to thank everybody. Thank you.
Comments from the council?
I, I have one noteworthy thing. I've been kind of looking at your wife, Chief. She's all smiles. You can tell she's very supportive and, and that she, she probably ought to take some credit of your success. You, you can't do this with a wife that is not supportive. So I'm really looking forward to the days ahead, see the things that you, you bring, your own personality to, to improve the, the department. You've got, you don't have big shoes to fill because you're going to have to fill your own, but, but you are standing on shoulders of, of a giant, and you know that, so. It, it's going to be great going forward, and congratulations so much for you and your family and, and this, this great chapter ahead.
Chief Slater, that sounds good, doesn't it? Thank you so much for your dedication to the city, and it just, I often think about how in the most difficult moments we have, I'm grateful for those men and women who are willing to go into the, into the difficult situations. And of course, on the Ninth Street Fire, that's pretty close to my house, and so I know that not only my home protected, but all the neighbors around there that were, that were watched over and protected by all your good work. So thank you, and I'm looking forward to the, the next few years and what, what has to come.
Chief Slater, I'd just like to say congratulations to you, to your family. You'll be a great leader for our community, for the city. Want to recognize everyone that's here tonight, say thanks to all of your firefighters and those that support you and are here to make sure you get off to a great start. Congratulations. God bless.
Chair, I'll, I'll go. I've been waiting a long time to say this. Chief Matthew, you're not invited to the golf tournament anymore. Sorry. We drew straws, and I actually begged for that assignment, so. No, it's, I, I appreciate everything that Chief Matthew has done for our city and everything that he's done for, for this department, and I wish him the best in the next chapter of his life. He's been an absolute icon in this, this city and this state for everything, and, and it's, it's been an honor to be able to work with you. So thank you. Chief Slater, I, I do like the sound of that, and I'm, I'm very excited about the future of the department, of what you can do here within Ogden City, and I, I I've had some experiences this week where I, I kind of, I don't know how to say it, um, kind of, or really, really realize the importance of, of, of great leadership and of great leaders. And I'm excited to have another one here at, at leading our department, and I, I appreciate the leadership that you've always shown, and I appreciate the, the willingness that you have to, to serve all of our residents and, and to, to serve all the, all the other firefighters in, in this community. So thank you for everything that you've done, and, and I, I, I'm not scared of what lies ahead because I know that we're, we're in very good hands, so thank you.
Well, I can say ditto to everything, but, um, no, I mean, I, I'm so excited for you, Chief Slater, to lead the department. Well, you have already led the department in your own way, and I've just learned a lot from you and from Chief Matthew about leadership and, and kind of piggybacking on Councilmember Blair's comments. You know, you just lead with such a humbleness and kindness that everybody in the community can see. But you're so trusted, and I'm really excited to see how your leadership goes. Thank you for your service.
Congratulations, Mike. There'll be challenges and moments of trepidation, but you're a guy that's up for the challenge, and you've got our support, and we know our city's in great hands. Thank you.
Jeez, there's not much left to say. You know, I think congratulations, Chief. That's awesome, and it shortens your title down so much, you know, I don't remember what it was. I think the mayor said it the best, and that is, is that it's not just the mayor's chief. It's our chief. It's Ogden's chief, and we, I hope you have big shoulders because there's a lot of us hoping and wanting you to succeed and doing great things for Ogden, so thank you. Thank you. You, you all can stay for everything else, but next on our agenda is the Central Weber Sewer Improvement District. Oh, oh, wait, wait, wait. Sorry, I think maybe, did I forget the pinning?
No.
No.
Okay.
We're gonna wait till that. In that, okay. All right, then disperse. We're gonna talk about the sewer district next.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks. I know what it.
Sure.
Yeah, because it does look like there isn't, yeah. All right, it's starting to, we're starting to wind down with, with the crowd here. I just also. Oh, just wait a minute.
Once I get going, they'll get out of here quickly.
All right, Councilmember Blair.
Yeah, once I get going, they'll clear out quick.
I think I'd rather go to that party. All right, next on our agenda is the Central Weber Sewer Improvement District. Before that, I want to just acknowledge that I, I didn't see you. Former Councilmember Witt and former Councilmember Lopez are in the, in the chambers as well. With that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn the time over to Councilmember Blair to talk about the Central Weber Sewer Improvement District.
Okay, thank you, Chair White. I have a presentation here, so I'm gonna just go ahead and, and read through this real quickly. The Central Weber Sewer Improvement District provides sewage treatment services to various municipalities throughout Weber and Davis Counties. Each participating governmental entity operates and maintains its own collection system, which is transported to the district for treatment. The sewer district is a separate legal entity with authority to impose property taxes, and that's why we're here tonight. The district is governed by a board of, the board comprised of mayors of each community served by the district. Councilmember Hare, Mayor Nadolsky, and myself currently serve as Ogden's representatives on the board. In 2023, the Utah State Legislature adopted special noticing requirements for special, special districts like the sewer district when a property tax increase is being considered. The statute requires that board members present a report regarding the proposed tax increase to their respective legislative bodies. The report must be given in a public meeting and be listed on the agenda as a separate item. The legislature's goal in adopting these requirements was to provide additional public notice to users of the proposed tax increase. And then we've got just a little bit about what those increases would look like. Just some highlights. The district treats wastewater from 16 municipal, municipal entities, which collectively produced 32.93 million gallons of sewage per day in calendar year 2024. There are four other districts along the Wasatch Front with, front with a similar scope of responsibility. As Councilmember Hare and Mayor Nadolsky will attest to, the Central Weber Sewer District usually operates on a, on a much smaller budget than those other three, than the other four. And the district implemented a tax increase in 2023 and 2024. Prior to 2023, the district had no increased, had not increased the property tax rate since 2012. The district is responding to increasing operating expenses due to inflation and the cost of essential operating needs, such as chemicals and utilities used in the treatment process. The district administration feels that the increase necessary to maintain current service levels in a cost-efficient manner. And then, just like we like to do with our own property taxes, you can see what that increase would look like. It's a 9.14% over 2024, and on a average home or average residence throughout the county, it would be an increase of about 13, which is 483,000, would be about $13.28. And then on a business valued at 483,000, it would be about, an increase of about $24.15 per year. And that, that rate increase would, would generate an additional revenue of just over 1.3 million, which is, which is very significant. And then, here's the information. If those who are interested can attend the public hearing, either in person or on Zoom, you can go to the link and get all the information there. The district is willing to answer any questions, so if you want to just call the number on that, the 801-731-3011, they'd be happy to direct you on how you can participate in that tax increase public hearing. So, there you go.
All right, this was informational, and thank you for serving on that committee. Next, and on our agenda is a public hearing, the proposed art grants funding.
Good evening, council members, Chair White, Mayor Nadolsky, and Mara. Thank you for having me here tonight. We are going to discuss the arts grants for fiscal year 26, which is Proposed Resolution 2025-14. This very small but mighty program brings an untold amount of arts access to our community and to the surrounding communities with arts performances, theater, music, festivals, art lessons and classes, exhibitions, so much that it's hard to, like, sit, go through the list and tell you everything. But tonight, we're gonna go through the proposed grants and the processes that we do to approve these grants. Your role in this process is to determine that the value that the community receives from these grants equals or exceeds the amount of, of funding that goes towards funding these grants. I just want to quickly touch on this. The grants are reviewed in a rigorous scoring process. The public arts sub, I mean, the Arts Grant Subcommittee reviews and scores each of these grants, and these are a couple of the things that we look at when we are reviewing the grants. We look at the quality of the mission of the organization or the quality of the program or project that is being proposed. We also carefully look at the number of creatives that are being hired to produce this program or project, the number of, and also, very importantly, the number of community members that are being served. We want to make sure that the application shows that the programming is open, open for all community members to attend. We like to see that the applicant shows a strong history of producing programming or has a good resume to show that they're, they are able to produce the project that they're proposing. We look at, we want to see a strong marketing plan so that the community is aware of these projects or programming, so they can participate with them, and that they have a solid budget, a balanced budget, that shows that they've looked at all the costs. It seems like a feasible program or project that they're doing with the grant money. And we also like to see that the project aligns with the goals and objectives of our, our master plan for arts and culture. This year, we have received 33 grant applications, and after the review and scoring process is being recommended, that 29 of those applications are being, being recommended for funding. General support applications would be nine received and nine being recommended for funding for a total award allocation for general support of 64,000. And then project support is 24 application received, and of those 24, 20 being recommended for funding, that total recommended award is 96,000. Now, those 29 applications, that 64, 96 equals $160,000. That is 150 from this year fiscal year 26 allocation for arts grants, plus some rollover funds from, return grant funds from previous years. Here's a quick two-year comparison of applications received and funding. In last year's cycle, we received 31 applications with the total requested funding being 248,500. 27 of those applications were funding, and then this year, we have 33 applications, $315,610 in requested funding, with 29 of those applications being funded at 160,000. Here's a quick graph that shows the past three years to show we're consistently at about 250, if not more, from this year of requested fundings, and we generally sit, as you know, about $150,000 of funding. Sometimes we have a little extra from projects that weren't completed, returned funding. We have some rollover from COVID, from programs and projects not completed because of the restrictions during COVID. So these are nine general support applicants. A general support application or applicant must be applied by a nonprofit, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that has an art, art space mission. So they must be an arts-based organization. The column that says percent of annual budget, as per guidelines, they cannot ask for more than 15% of their previous year's total operating budget. The second column is the amount that they requested with their applications. So we have $132,000 of request. It's being recommended that they, these grants be funded at 64,000, which is 40% of the funding allocation. And as per the grants ordinance, we try to shoot to be really close to that 40, 60 split, 40 going to general, 60 to project or developmental support. I'm sure you're all familiar with these organizations and what they do in the, in the community for us, so we won't go into detail with each of those. This is the first 10 of our project support. Project support applicants can be a nonprofit organization, it can be an individual artist, it can be a small business. These small organizations produce actually quite a bit of programming for our community. That first column shows the percentage of their budget. For a project support, they can't ask for more than 50% of their project budget. The second column shows the amount that was requested, and then the third column, of course, is the award recommendation. Now, in work session, we did go through in detail a little bit more about what each of these applicants are providing, and it is in your packet, so we won't go into full detail here in public session, but if you have any questions, please just stop me and I'll explain what any of those applicants up there are producing. This is the second 10, so this is a total of 20 project supports. And again, there's their, showing where they're sitting at with their budget of ask, how much they're requesting, which is a total of 183,610, and we're recommending 96,000 of funding go toward these project grants, which is exactly 60% of the funding allocation. Now, before I move forward, was there any questions on any of these project grants or the general support grants? Nope? Great. So, quick recap, we're looking at $160,000 to fund these grants, again, 150 from fiscal year 26 budget, and then 10,000 from our previous year's budgets. And so tonight, we're just asking for you to consider to adopt Proposed Resolution 2025-14 in support of these, this art grant program.
All right, any questions?
I, I do have a question, I think. There's a new state law that allows, that kind of does prohibit some kinds of things with public funds. And what steps have you taken as the director to comply with state law?
We are in, I believe, we have been working with legal that we're fully in compliance. We actually went through a process just with this in this cycle before we got here to revise our questions. The questionnaire, we did have some questions that might have been in a gray area of not being in compliance with HB 261. We did remedy that, and all the applicants submitted, resubmitted that on the new form. And so, we definitely, in our guidelines, and especially for the ongoing cycles, have ensured that any questions, that we're gonna, that's gonna be part of the review process to ensure that we're in compliance with those state guidelines.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple. I, I noticed you have some great pictures along with all of your slides, and I'm assuming that you get some great photos throughout the, I mean, do you receive photos, or do we take photos of, of these events or what they do with this?
Yes, yes, we do. Actually, in the final reporting process, which we're just coming to the tail in which I'm sure many of you have received emails of thank you and kind of talking about their programming and project to you as well, Mara. As part of that final report, they do send in photos, which is what we use for our presentations, so we compile a lot of those photos. And then, also, our marketing team does attend things and take photos and post it on social media, so it's really great to see the program. We attend things as much as possible. The Arts Advisory Committee is recommended to attend the programming, just to make sure, you know, programming is at high quality. So we do collect quite a bit. I have a large collection of photos. I'd be happy to share with you.
I would love to see, I mean, I don't know how we can do it, but I'd love to see those. I think it'd be wonderful to see all the different places it goes and all the people it impacts, so that'd be wonderful. And number two, I noticed that we're to 160, and we put in 150. I know we, we've got some money from the past. Are we considering increasing that amount, or do we, are we still comfortable with the 150?
As you can see, we're consistently 100,000, if not more, below the ask, and I'm a little concerned with the loss of funding from federal levels that our small arts-based organizations may be losing funding, really necessary funding to keep these programs, you know, available for the community. So it might be something you could consider looking at as we're moving forward, because I believe next year we'll see even more ask due to the loss of federal grant funding.
I, I agree. Not only the dollar amount more, but I believe we'll get more.
Applicants.
Applicants also, so thank you.
All right, any more questions for Lori? All right.
Great, thank you.
Ready for a motion? Oh, it's a public hearing. Sorry. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to come up and speak on these arts funding grants, please do so. You have three minutes.
Madam Chair, members of the council and your honor, my name is Robert Hunter. I live at 5103 Sunset Ridge here in Ogden. I'm not here to comment on any specific grant, just generally to thank you for your support of the arts. I have a favorite line that I repeat. "If of thy goods thou art bereft, and to thee but two loaves are left, sell one, and with the dole buy hyacinth to feed thy soul." This city has a, a lot more than two loaves, but you, you've used your money wisely to support the arts here. It's a beautiful city, and we have beautiful programs here, and I'm just proud to be a part of it. As a host for the Ogden Raptors, I get to meet families of ballplayers from all over the country, and to a person they comment on the beauty in this city. We've got the horses out, we've got those beautiful hanging flowers and that sort of thing, and just want to thank you for all your support for the arts. My, my first graduate degree was actually in the arts. I was a, I graduated in what was called commercial art. These days, they would, it would be called graphics. And speaking of the Raptors, I'm gonna go home now and watch them. They, they left for Idaho tonight to play the Idaho Falls Chuckers, and we expect them this week to make mashed potatoes in Idaho.
Hello, Chair, and Mayor Nadolsky, Administrator Mara, and the council members. My name is Michelle Tanner, and I'm with Ogden Friends of Acoustic Music, OFOM, and I live at 174424th Street in Ogden. I just want to express my gratitude once again for supporting our music-based organization. Our local funding is, is turning out to be so very crucial to our success, and along with Weber County, we really appreciate the support we get from Ogden City. Our three programs, we're really proud that we reach the community, we make it accessible. We have the Ogden Music Festival at Fort Winnebentura, and the support that we've received from our coworkers with Ogden Events and the police and fire has always been really great. Several festivals this size are closing around the country. Several festivals this size are closing around the country because of financial difficulties. And so there's challenges all the way. We're also proud we're able to provide free music lessons to underserved kids at our after-school programs. And the partnerships we have with Boys and Girls Clubs, Youth Impact, Utah Neighborhood Connection allow that to take place. And we're developing musicians with that. And just our Dia de los Muertos in Ogden program, we're so proud of. It really draws the community, the entire community it's accessible to. We bring great music there, and we want that to be a safe and welcoming place again this year. And thank you for all your help.
Thanks, Michelle. You were here more than the sewer district, I can see.
You know, I did serve on the sewer district for many years, and it's very important. But no, I'm not here for the sewer district. I'm Amy Wicks, and first of all, I'll say the Ogden Arts Grants are one of the best return of investment of taxpayer dollars in our community. I attend many of the events, not just from the organizations I'm involved with, but all of those. And they're vital to the vibrancy and rich fabric of our community. So I would encourage you to support those. As was mentioned before, there is a challenge with some of the federal funding disappearing, and I think a lot of organizations are going to be struggling with providing programming in the future. And so that is something to be aware of. I'm here because I serve on the Board of Chamber Orchestra Ogden. We were formed in two thousand and eleven under the baton of Dr. Michael Palumbo. And Chamber Orchestra Ogden is comprised of professional, semi-professional, and amateur musicians from throughout our community. And we're honored to call Perry's Egyptian Theater our home. We started out in Union Station and quickly outgrew that space. We provide high-quality, low-cost, professional-level orchestra concerts to downtown Ogden. We want to make classical music accessible, affordable, and enjoyable and fun for the greater Ogden community, and tickets are free for youth and veterans. They're also under the ten-dollar price point, too, for anybody else. We do free concerts, we do an untamed Pops concert at the Ogden Amphitheater. And all of this is, you know, because of support we receive from the city and other granting organizations. So I would just like to thank you for supporting the arts with these grants.
Going online, Heath Sato.
Hi, Heath Sato, Ogden resident. I want, pardon me, I wanted to thank you guys for continuing to fund the arts. The focus on the arts here is one of the things that attracted me to Ogden as a city. And you guys ended up not talking about tonight, but in work session, it was originally on the schedule. You're talking about changing the way you're doing grant decisions and stuff. And I just really want to know, not necessarily this mayor, but another mayor in the future, if we change the rules, I'm a little concerned with that they could have impacts on things like our Pride Festival and things like that, the funding for that. So just, I want us to have a really good discussion about that in the work session when you guys do get back to that. Thanks.
Thanks, Heath. Anyone else?
Chair, seeing no movement, I will go ahead and make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Blair, second by Councilmember Ritchie to close the public hearing. This is a voice vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
And along with that, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we adopt proposed resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash fourteen.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Blair, second by Councilmember Ritchie to adopt proposed or, or proposed resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash fourteen. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Chaburka.
Aye.
Councilmember Graff.
Aye.
Councilmember Myers.
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Aye.
Councilmember Blair.
Aye.
Vice Chair Hire.
Aye.
Chair White.
Aye, that passes. I think, what's that?
We were just chatting, but I wouldn't mind making just a quick comment, if you don't mind. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, go for it.
Oh, no, I was just going to say that I spent the last week up at Chautauqua Institute in a week-long kind of, I guess, adult summer camp slash conference that was talking all about the topic of community engagement through art. And so this was a really perfect timing for this, you know. Someone like the former director of the Kennedy Center spoke about the power of community engagement, and I really feel like these grants and the process we go through really helps to build community in a variety of ways that are really necessary to our community, much like what the speaker spoke of. So I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments? All right, moving on. Reports from the Planning Commission, the proposed rezone of one hundred and fifty-five, one fifty-five West Fourteenth Street.
Good evening, Chair White and city councilors. This is a request for a zone change from M1, which is an industrial zone, to C3, which is a commercial zone at one fifty-five West Fourteenth Street. The property is just south of Winco, it's along Fourteenth Street. The, it's about thirty-two thousand square feet. There's an existing twelve thousand square foot building that has a, the Iron House Gym within the building. There's an aerial that shows the building. There is a building now on the property right next to it. Here's a more recent photo than the one I showed you at the work session. The applicant has removed the outdoor storage and started the parking lot. The applicant would like to use the building for several uses that aren't allowed in the M1 zone, things like a beauty salon, a tattoo parlor. And there are also some other uses that would be allowed in the C3 zone, such as office services and therapy and general retail sales that aren't allowed in the M1 zone but would be allowed in the C3 zone. So the applicants requested the zone change, the property. In looking at the Gibson Community Plan, this is actually consistent with the community plan. It had a vision of rezoning an area to C3. And as you can see on the picture, this property would be included in that area. The general plan has several factors to consider when you look at a zone change. One is a definite edge to development. This is right on the edge of the transition between the C3 and the M1 zone. The plan seeks to have properties that face each other within the same zone, and the property across the street is in C3 zone. Boundaries should not cut across lots, and so the entire lot would be rezoned. It seeks to avoid isolating neighborhoods, and this does not isolate any particular neighborhood. And zoning should be based on market pattern, circulation, traffic counts. This is off the beaten path, a bit of ways, but it is adjacent to commercial zones, and so there will be some commercial traffic to support the commercial uses. And seeks to avoid local streets serve residential zones, and this is, does not, would not require traffic through a residential zone to reach it. There are some improvements that will be need to made, need to be made to bring it up to code, and the applicant and I have talked about it, and they're, they're partway through. There's a few more things that they need to do to get the site ready for the proposed uses. And the planning commission's reviewed this and recommends approval based on the findings listed.
All right. Is the applicant here, petitioner? Oh, thank you. Hi there.
Hello. First time meeting everybody, so apologize, I'm not completely familiar with all the formalities, but.
Just state your name real quick.
Tyler Alexander.
There you go.
With GRIG. Obviously, we just purchased the building. We'd like to enhance the available uses for it. I think everything that we've reviewed with the planning commission and the general layout of the building, the property, makes sense for the request and for the move. I don't think that we're looking to do anything that's too crazy. You know, just wondering if the mayor might be able to give us one of those big speeches that you, I mean, it's so anticlimactic, you know, and what we're dealing with here. I think it makes a lot of sense just to request the transition and move. I'm open for any questions that you guys might have, but as the photos show, we're already moving that direction regardless of the vote. We'd like to improve the property and make it just a much better place of business, you know, and be able to house a little bit, how do you say, businesses that suit the community a bit better. You know, the light manufacturing, I know, was initially implemented when they were built, but the surrounding area, the community developments have changed, and I think it just makes sense and supports to move to a C3.
Great, thanks. Any questions for the applicant?
I just have one. The landscaping requirement, that's going to be something you'll need to do, and I assume you're fully aware of that. What is your timeline for completing those upgrades to the property?
We have a grace of weeks. It's, yeah, nothing that we weren't, we already striped, as you can see. We reserved spots for the ADA just because we didn't want to fully move that direction if, for some reason, there was something unforeseen that we didn't get the approval. But yeah, they've already been outlined and reserved. We've already designated that. We've also contacted Rocky Mountain Power. They've improved the lights there, replaced the bulbs in the parking light. We have some other commercial lighting that's going to be coming in and installed around the building just to enhance the aesthetics and improve the lighting situation there. The dumpster requires screening. Obviously, it's had to be moved several times, you know, front, back. But yeah, that's something that we're fully aware of. And, you know, signage, those are all temporary right now. Chair White, I believe you had some concerns about another tattoo parlor. I just want you to know, they're not another, they're just moving. So they're moving their location there. They've hung a temporary sign while they're waiting for permits, and we've made that well-known that, you know, everything as far as them operating out of that facility has to be based on final approval. But, you know, they're ready and willing to go. They've already, you know, moved furniture, and they're just kind of waiting for an approval before they have to back out. So that's, that's kind of where we sit. As far as timeline for the completion, you know, we could have everything that needs to be done in the building done within the next two to three weeks.
Great.
Yeah.
Good luck with your new business.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions?
Just a question, I don't know if it's for Barton maybe, or, but just the property to the east. It seems like that will be isolated as a, as a, you know, that, that, I think it's a print shop there. Has there been discussions with that property owner and about any changes here and how it might impact them or anything along those lines?
Yeah, I did approach the property owner about it. Ironically, you know, can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink, but he was heading to the rodeo and didn't really want to discuss much about it, didn't understand the benefits. I printed out the packet to explain to him that it impacts the businesses zero. His business currently is allowed in both. It's a signed print shop, and so he's in both. Just one of those things that he, I don't know if he didn't fully grasp what we wanted to do or what the implication for his business might be, but he didn't want to sign on to that, and so I told him I had to move forward, you know, regardless.
Good question.
That probably really is for Barton, though.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the council could initiate that, or planning commission could initiate changing that one, this property, too.
I have a question regarding it, though. If we did initiate and, and then affected that zone change, he would be legal nonconforming with the landscape requirement or not? Would he have to, would he have to complete the landscaping on his property as well?
He would be legal nonconforming, so he wouldn't have, he wouldn't have to complete, he wouldn't have to do anything to the property unless he changed uses or expanded.
He'd just be nonconforming. Right. That's kind of what I wanted. I didn't know about the landscaping part, though. If, if we were to initiate it, he'd just be legal nonconforming, right?
Yes.
Okay. And is there, in order to, for us to do that, we would have to still send them back to the planning commission, and they'd have to go through the whole process, right?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Any other questions? Yeah, I was just thinking, there's a public hearing, but it is not. All right.
Madam Chair, without any, hearing no other comments, I'd like to propose that, or I'd like to make a motion that we approve proposed ordinance two thousand and twenty-five dash twenty-three, amending the zoning map of Ogden.
I would second that, although I would like to know if there were, is there any other public input before we vote?
Oh, thank you. See, I knew there was. Thank you. Is there any other public input on this? Missed that piece.
Yeah. Okay, my second stance.
Just make sure there's none online, sorry. All right. All right. Since there is no public input, we will take the motion by Councilmember Myers, second by Vice Chair Hire, to adopt proposed ordinance two thousand and twenty-five dash twenty-three. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Graff.
Aye.
Councilmember Myers.
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Aye.
Councilmember Blair.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaburka.
Aye.
Vice Chair Hire.
Aye.
Chair White.
Aye, that passes. And just as a comment, it's the right thing to do for the zone.
Chair, absolutely, I think that, that looks, you know, it certainly fits. It's kind of in harmony with that corridor idea, the wall corridor, wanting to have it transition more into commercial. The only concern I have is that, that isolated island, and I'm not sure if it concerns me enough to sponsor an initiative. I guess I'd appreciate Mr. Barton's idea, whether he thinks that's something we ought to be proactive about or just let it happen when it happens. Do you have, do you have an opinion about that, Barton?
Yeah, I think we're, as part of the code update and general plan update, we'll be doing several zone changes, and I would propose that we include that in that group of changes.
Great plan. Okay, thank you.
All right, moving along. Barton, don't go far. We have the proposed zone text amendment landscaping requirement. So, there he is.
All right, thank you. So this is a proposed text amendment on single-family landscaping requirements. And this is the reason why we're doing this. It relates to, you know, Utah's already a very dry state, and recently, it's been more dry. I just updated this graphic from the work session. When, when we're in the work session, we were currently abnormally dry. Well, as of now, we are now in a moderate drought. So, and I think we can expect that this, these conditions will be more normal than not in the future. This has had effects on our environment. One of the big effects has been on the Great Salt Lake. You can see the changes in the Great Salt Lake. I think the left is from the nineteen eighty-four flooding, and the one on the right was the sort of all-time low, which was, I think it was like in twenty twenty-two. So you can see a big difference. And that has a lot of effects. Here's some particular effects on just wildlife, biology, recreation use, safety, wetlands, land use, economics, air quality. There's a lot of things that are affected by the level of the Great Salt Lake. The city has been proactive in addressing this. We have adopted a water-wise landscape ordinance that applies to multifamily, commercial, and industrial developments. We do have a Flip Your Strip program. We've done quite a bit of improvements to our city operations, just how we water things and how we fix leaky pipes and things like that. One of the biggest things we can do is the thirty-six inch Ogden Canyon River line. I know you're familiar with this, that this was constructed in nineteen thirty-five and has problems. And this is probably the biggest thing we can do to save water is to fix this pipe. And it also relates to the Great Salt Lake. Looked at, worked with the state and realized that if we can provide more water through our system to the Great Salt Lake, it will help all those effects that we talked about in the Great Salt Lake, better habitat for birds, better water quality, improving the loss of, you know, the dust and erosion and everything else there. So we have been able to reach an agreement with the State Department of Natural Resources that they will provide us a ten million dollar grant for this pipe. that they will provide us a $10 million grant for this pipeline. Some of the stipulations to that grant is that we provide 1,500 acre feet annually to the Willard Spur, and we adopt a water-efficient landscaping ordinance for new single-family dwellings. So that's a big motivator to adopt this particular ordinance. So we are proposing an ordinance that meets the requirements of the grant. It requires that the ordinance state that no more than 35% of the landscaped area in the front and side yard of residential dwelling could be natural turf grass. And so the ordinance proposed reflects that, where we say no single-family dwelling where building permit is applied for after July 15th, 2025 shall be limited to a maximum of 35% of the total landscaped area in turf in the front side yard facing a street, on a corner lot and side yard. Now, just as a note, when we brought in the work session, we had a May 15th date. That was based on us writing it a few months ago and hoping that this would get to you in May, and it just took a little bit longer. So we, we've changed the date to July 15th, which happens to be today. We are proposing a few housekeeping changes along with it. When we did adopt the water-wise landscape ordinance, I'd say we kind of threw the baby out with the bathwater and a few things. We do require water-efficient, water-wise landscaping in, that any landscaping in single-family homes be water-wise. But we did not specify how much landscaping had to be there. And so that's left some of these allowances for just rock lawns with just a few shrubs could be considered water-wise landscaping. And that didn't meet the community's goals for appearance. Also, just a rock yard like that generates a lot of heat, and that is contrary to other goals. So in order for them to really fit in with the neighborhoods and not have that heat island effect, requiring that the landscape area be covered by at least 50% living plants. So here's an example of what that might look like. You might have turf that up to 35%, and then living ground cover. You could have some just rock areas, but it would have to be a, a total coverage of at least 50% by living ground cover. Another little housekeeping change is we get something like this where people say, hey, I just want to do gravel in my front yard because it's landscaping. And we know, like in this, is this really landscaping or is that just extending the parking in the front yard? So there's a requirement that when you have rock areas adjacent to the driveway, that you put something between that and the rock area to prevent it just being used for parking. Here's a good example of where you do have rocks right up to the driveway, but you can see there's plants and boulders and other things that are going to prevent that from being just a parking area. A little change on the requirement for when you can install, you're required to do street trees as part of a single-family home, and this just provides that you can also do a financial guarantee if you're trying to get occupancy in the middle of winter or things like that. So how does this relate to our city goals? One of the goals is to provide an adequate quality water supply to all Ogden City water customers. And by getting that grant for the water line, that will help do that. It'll also help minimize water use overall by limiting amount of turf. Another goal, neighborhoods in which residents are involved in creating a safe, livable, and attractive environment. So again, an attractive environment doesn't have to be all lawn, but feeling is it shouldn't just be just all rock. So you can do water-wise landscaping to be attractive for the neighborhood. And again, we've changed that to the new date of compliance. So the planning commission has recommended that you adopt the ordinance.
Any questions? All right.
I do have a question. Barton, can you explain what this proposed ordinance, how it deviates from what the state requirement for turf grass replacement rebates would, would allow? I mean, what's, what's the difference between, I mean, why can't we get there? And what's the difference?
Yeah, so the, the state does have a program where you could change out your lawn with water-wise landscaping in your front yard, your private front yard, and they would provide a rebate for that. That program had several strings attached, which when we brought it up to management staff and the planning commission, they didn't feel like they wanted to get hooked on those strings.
I guess that's what I'm asking. What are those strings? What are those?
Yes. So one of the strings would be with going back. So if somebody had a front yard that was just, you know, all water-wise plants, no turf, and a new owner came in and wanted to put turf there, if we went with the, the state rebate program, you would not be able to do that. And that was a sticking point for the, the planning commission. That was probably the biggest one. There were some other little technical things just about how they, they wrote the requirements, but that was, that was the biggest sticking point, not being, not being able to go back.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions? All right, seeing no other questions right now. This is a public input. You have public input on the landscaping requirements? Come on up.
I'm wearing lots of hats today. I'm Amy Wicks. I work for Utah Rivers Council, and I'm the Great Salt Lake Water Keeper. I think the minimum 35% turf allowed is a good start, but I think we can do better. I would encourage you to do more to restrict the use of non-functional turf in the future for city-owned properties, commercial, industrial, and residential areas too. Go out to BDO. There's a lot of low-hanging fruit there, and it's just not being used as turf. And sprinklers are spraying the street, and it's just the biggest waste of water that really doesn't need to happen. It's going to take 4.5 million acre feet of water to bring the Great Salt Lake up to a minimum healthy level of 4,198 feet in elevation. As your planner showed that little graph with the green, that's 4,198. We're about 4.5 million acre feet of water away from that. And every drop counts, but it's going to take some courage and changes in behavior from all of us to bring enough water to the lake to preserve the largest remaining wetland ecosystem in the American West, home to 12 million birds, source of toxic dust if we don't get water in it. Something else with what's proposed tonight is the 50% requirement for plant material wasn't, it's not really clear. It needs some clarification to indicate that that 50% is the mature plant size. And I didn't see that in there. And that's something that's used in a lot of other cities ordinances, so you may want to look at that. So, thank you.
Great, thanks.
Deborah Darrington. We are currently doing some landscaping over on one of my projects with this in mind. What I would recommend and suggest is I think a lot of, a lot of the projects that are here and the requirements that are there, sometimes we don't have the education. This is something I think kind of foreign to someone, especially a new homeowner. We're used to planting a yard, planting lawn, seeing trees, and this is a very dramatic difference from what we've seen before. And so I don't know how we do that, but the more pictures that we have of showing different variances, because I do see a lot of areas that we have around Ogden where they have taken the concept of being water-wise, but we have just massive amounts of rocks that now are very hard to weed because we've got the weeds coming up through them. Also makes it difficult for people who are walking their dogs, and we have a very prominent dog community. I don't know if you've ever had a rottweiler that you're walking, and he decides to go over into the rocks, and then you're trying to pick that up out of the rocks. You have to take a few of those rocks home with you. So just, I think a lot of people want to comply, want to do those things, but we lack that education or the creativity. Also, a big plus, and a big, or not plus, a big plug for our green waste. I just picked up my first load that I picked up of the rock chip, which is one of my favorite landscaping materials, is $2.50 for an entire truckload. That's some pretty cheap landscaping, and I find it to be my preference above pea gravel, et cetera. The other thing with that education is I know that we can't enforce people to put weed barrier down, but sometimes to let them know that that's going to save them a lot of headache and beautify the city at the same time. There are a lot of water-wise plants that are becoming available, so I don't know if maybe in our arts as well, if there are some fun community activities where there can be training, not necessarily pulling in experts, but I know we have a lot of experts around in the areas from Valley Nursery, Home Depot, Lowe's, et cetera, that would probably jump. I know how much they donate to Restore and the volunteer hours that their employees put in, so that might be a fun activity coming up. Certainly couldn't plan it for this year, but coming up next year so that we can get that, or YouTube videos, anything that we can do to help educate people so that we are more, more, more capable of doing those, those landscaping's and making it beautiful. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Michelle Tanner, Ogden resident. In my, in my, our property, we have a couple of acres of, like, woods, and we're very conscientious of how much water we use, basically just to keep the trees alive. And I look around at all my neighbors who water their turf every day, and my point is, you're bringing a proposal that affects new builds. What about our beautiful existing properties that we have here in Ogden? Can we address a little more how to conserve with that, those, with the turf that is pretty excessive and then control the watering? And I also want to say thank you for recognizing the crisis we're in with the Great Salt Lake and the need for making these sorts of changes.
Thanks. All right, let's go online to Heath Sato.
Hi, Heath Sato, Ogden resident. Yeah, I can, wanted to point out, Amy Wicks is dead on about some of these industrial areas. My shop is out in one, and we have a ton of grass out here, and they get watered so well. And if there's anything we can do to lower the amount of watering that's being done out here with, you know, water we could be drinking or sending to the lake, that would be great. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah.
Laura Lewis, Ogden City resident. I have one, well, I have a couple, but we'll start here. One of the things I'm concerned about when I see some of that, and my neighbor has something similar, and it's erosion. When they just put a few plants out there and rocks, a few rocks, and we get those heavy rainstorms or they water too much, all that floats on down the road. And it, we need something somewhere to make sure that they're going to keep the soil and whatever they put there intact, so it isn't in my front yard. And then, I forgot the other question, so I'll stop there. Thanks. Okay, thank you.
Bob Hunter, Ogden City. A few minutes ago, I talked about the beauty of the city. One of my concerns with this, I, I, I support the recommendation, but I think along with it, it would be helpful if the city would recruit some people, this is referred to earlier by one of the speakers, people from the nurseries, maybe some landscape artists to volunteer, and the city in its own communications, on its website and so forth, offering suggestions on how people can do that landscaping so that it will look beautiful. And some people just, you know, don't know how to do that, and if they're, just end up putting a bunch of junky-looking stuff, the, the city's not going to be that beautiful anymore. So I'd suggest that the city play a major role in trying to offer suggestions and support for people in their landscaping. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. All right. Since there's no more public input, we can entertain some answers. Let's see. I'm not going to get them quite right, but maybe, Barton, if you could talk a little bit about the plant material question?
Yes, that is measured upon maturity. Yes, and it's fairly easy to look that up. You know what species of plant, you can look on a guide and figure out where, how big it grows upon maturity. So yeah, you do see these little tiny plants, and there's big rocks, and you know, it's going to fill in, so it's.
But it is upon maturity?
Yes.
Is that just going to ask, is that defined in the ordinance?
We haven't written in this place. We have in other places, so we could add that in, you could add that language if you wanted to.
Let's move just, what about existing builds? Why didn't we look at those?
We were focused on this ordinance to meet the requirements for the, the grant. We don't typically require existing builds to go back and retrofit. There is a requirement, we do limit the amount of turf in commercial industrial to 15% of the total landscaped area now. But as far as requiring existing ones that have more than that to retrofit, we haven't jumped that. If it's city-owned property, you know, city could, as a program, choose to do that. But that's just something that in a zoning code, you don't usually require people to go back.
Have you talked at all about the erosion and, and I think it was also mentioned, weed barriers. Do we require any of that as well?
In general, the installation of plants will help with the erosion. If it's just rock, then that tends to have greater erosion potential. Having the plants in there will add root structure and help prevent erosion. It, it still can happen. And weed barriers are, that's best practice. This particular ordinance doesn't require that. But if you don't do it, you're going to be weeding a lot.
Okay.
I actually disagree with weed barriers, but it's my own personal opinion. Yeah, you put it down, and then the weeds will go on top of them. So anyway, but that's just my own personal opinion.
And what have we thought about as far as city communications around this?
Well, we're intending to do city communications after you adopt it so that we can do that. The, the city newsletter is a great resource that we can put out information on that, and we plan on putting information on the website, too. We're waiting for your decision on this.
I have a question about the plant material. I have a neighbor, maybe I better not be too specific, but they've, they've got rock landscaping, and it has lots of plant vegetation. It's just all weeds. And so do we define the plant material species or anything like that that can be counted?
Yes, there is a whole chapter on plant species, that it has to be, you know, a actual landscape plant material and not just.
I'm going to send you a photo, just, just so you, it's, it's a good case study, so.
Yes, I've had those arguments with developers. It's landscaping, though it's weeds. It's, yes. But there is a, a chapter that says what qualifies it.
Great. And hopefully that'll be part of our messaging going forward. Okay?
Yes.
You know, good examples are, are wonderful. You know, some of the photos you had in your presentation, you know, hostas and rosies and daisies and this and that, those things give people ideas. And, and, you know, like, people want that nice-looking stuff. They just don't know what it looks like.
Yeah.
You know, Utah Watersavers website has lots of examples, and it even gives you the, the materials list of what to go buy at the nursery to do that. I just love that stuff. So we, we need to supply good examples for people to use.
I appreciate that. And I just wanted to piggyback on your question earlier, Councilmember Hare, because I think, I mean, I'm not sure, I think it would be worth the council considering the state guidelines. I think it would be worth the council considering the state guidelines. I understand the planning commission was concerned about it. But I've had many residents reach out to me to ask if we qualified for that program. And I understand that that's one of the barriers. Also, I think it's a challenge because although we have implemented the Flip Your Strip program, there's a lot of households that don't qualify for that in our community because they don't have a strip, right? They don't have a sidewalk, so then they're not eligible for that. So that would be a way to get them eligible for something. So I think it's worth considering. I understand the challenge, but I think planting turf that is not water-wise in some way is going to be a really big challenge in the future for us to continue doing that. We don't live in a place where it naturally occurs. And so it's always going to be taking more water. And people do overwater it as well. So yeah, I think that's something worth considering because then that would give everybody a lot more opportunities to change their landscaping with some support from the state.
It is expensive to make that change. And for expecting people to do it on their own, it's kind of prohibitive. So the benefit, you know, for that grant is pretty handy for a lot of people that would like to make the change.
And we are watering all the parks. You know, I mean, people could use that for their turf if they wanted a place for their kids to play. You know, there's other alternatives, I guess.
Then you said that they can't go back. But my understanding was that they could go back. They just had to pay back the grant.
No, the, in order to qualify the program, you have to adopt an ordinance that would prohibit them going back.
Okay, all right, okay. Well, I understood it differently.
Yes, sorry, yes. Oh, and there was one other thing on that is park strips. You have to adopt ordinance that completely prohibits turf in park strips.
On new builds.
And we have some park strips that are 15, 20 feet wide. And those you can water efficiently. And that was another sticking point.
I don't have a problem with limiting them myself.
Get rid of them. I think we, I think we hit them all. Yeah, thanks. All right.
Chair, I will make a motion then that we adopt a proposed ordinance 2025-24.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Hayer, second by Councilmember Blair to adopt proposed ordinance 2025-24.
Chair. Before we vote, I'm going to wade into something here in an effort to say a couple of things and offer myself as someone that would like to learn a little bit more. So here's what I've been thinking about. One, it's important that we conserve water at every level. We live in the second driest state in the Union. And it's getting drier. There's just no doubt about that. My worry is reflected in Robert's comments this evening. And it was exemplified when we went through this a couple of years ago. We were in a drought situation. And Flip the Strip was part of the program to conserve some water and help residents do that. And what we saw was a wholesale killing of turf grass and replacement with rock. And I think we forget some of the benefits of turf grass while we've acknowledged the negatives around rock. And not only does it accumulate weeds, but people manage weeds with herbicide. Rock attracts and retains heat. It doesn't create curb appeal. Where turf grass is cooler, it filters water, it creates oxygen, it takes CO2 out of the air, and it creates a curb appeal that results in higher property values for people. I think there's a good way to go about this. And I'm just going to, and Amy, this is where you're going to be able to help me, I think, with your background. But as I read about water use, residential water use amounts to somewhere between 8% and 10% of the consumption of water in the state. Another 10% to 12% is commercial industrial use. And then roughly 80% is agriculture. So if we're 8%, and the work that I looked into says 67% of that 8% goes to watering our lawns, which is significant. So rather than, but it's not enough to fill the Great Salt Lake. The real savings that is going to conserve water for human consumption and for our river, our waterways and our lake is going to be solving the egg problem, the way I look at it. It's 80% of what we use. So I understand this is going to pass. I understand this is just new construction. We don't have a lot of residential new construction in Ogden. I understand that it's important that we stand for water conservation. But I think that there are some other ways that are being missed, like smart clocks that operate our irrigation systems. Let's put meters on our secondary water so people are more conscious about how much water they're throwing on their turf grass because they're paying for it and not receiving it basically for free. So I think there's some other ideas out there that will also contribute to residential water conservation without risking the beauty of our community by losing our turf grass to rock. So that's my two cents.
All right, any other comments before we? All right, we have a motion on the table by Vice Chair Hayer, second by Councilmember Blair to adopt the proposed ordinance 2025-24. Sorry, this is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Aye.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Councilmember Chaburka?
Aye.
Councilmember Graff?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hayer?
Aye.
Chair White?
Aye, that passes. Thanks, great comments, you guys. Thank you. And thank you for.
Yeah, I do have a lot of comments to say back to you, but we can do it on our own.
Thanks.
All right, next are the reports from the administration on the proposed joint resolution, America 250. Kristi McBride.
Good evening. My name is Kristi McBride. I'm the Director of Cultural Services. And I am going to read this verbatim because it's mouthful. Thank you, Councilmembers, Chair White, Mayor Nadolsky, and Mira for having us tonight. I'd like to present, for your consideration, a joint resolution supporting America 250 Utah and formally recognizing Ogden Weaver America 250 Utah 250 Community Committee as the official body to help lead our community efforts in commemorating the 250th anniversary of the founding of the United States. This historic milestone is being coordinated nationwide by the U.S. Semi-Quin Centennial Commission. This is a new word for us.
Say it one more time.
Yeah. So we did the Sesquicentennial in 2019. Then we did the Centennial last year. Now we are doing the Semi-Quin Centennial.
Got it?
Yes. We're going to have to learn to spell that one, too. In partnership with America250.org, with the goal of engaging and uniting Americans through service, celebration, and education. The Governor's Office has called upon committees across Utah to participate in America 250 Utah, encouraging local initiatives that reflect on our shared history and our strength in civic pride. In response, Ogden City and Weber County do what we do best, and that's collaborate with our partners, Ogden Downtown Alliance, Visit Ogden, Weber County. We quickly got together and said we need to do this as a group and not individually. So we're making the magic happen again, together to form the Ogden Weaver America 250 Utah 250 Community Committee. To plan and enhance local events and programs in support of this initiative, the proposed joint resolution would officially recognize Ogden Weaver America 250 Utah 250 Community Committee, appoint Councilmember Richard Hayer as the city's council representative. Thank you. Affirm Ogden's partnership with America 250 Utah and commit to supporting America 250 Utah programs locally. Adopting this resolution will also qualify Ogden City to receive a $1,500 stipend to help with planning and outreach efforts. On behalf of the committee, which is made up of myself, Luis Lopez, Sarah Tolliver, Ashley Bachwald, Reid Thompson, Marty Smith, and Richard Hayer, we invite the council to adopt this resolution 2025-5 and join us in affirming Ogden's role in celebrating our nation's heritage and future. Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, Kristi. And are there any questions for Kristi on the Ogden? What?
Semi-Quin Centennial.
I wrote it down, yeah. I'm going to have to read this a couple of times.
All right.
There's a handbook. I'll share it with you.
And I think that it'd be great before we vote on it, if you'd like to read the resolution.
I'd be happy to, but Kristi actually.
Outlined it, okay?
She summarized it very well and a lot more flowery than this resolution really is, so. But I'd be happy to if you want.
No, it's fine.
Okay, then I will, because it's not that long. This is.
We want to have you, I want to hear you say something.
It's not, I don't know if it's in there. This is a resolution of the Ogden City Council and Mayor Benjamin K. Nadolsky, supporting America 250 Utah and recognizing and approving of the Ogden Weaver America 250 Committee. Whereas Spencer J. Cox and the Utah State Legislature created the America 250 Utah Commission, also known as America 250 Utah. And whereas, the mission of the America 250 Utah is to commemorate and celebrate, reflect on our nation's past, build community, and look forward to, look forward toward the future by educating, engaging, and uniting Utahns and visitors to our state. And whereas, America 250 Utah is seeking partnerships with counties and municipalities to further its mission. And whereas, this partnership will be formed by creating a local committee called the Ogden Weaver America 250 Utah 250 Community Committee. And whereas, the Ogden Weaver America 250 Utah 250 Community Committee will focus on important events, people, and places within Ogden to commemorate and celebrate Ogden's role in America's 250th anniversary. And whereas, local projects will enhance tourism, community building, and economic development opportunities. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Ogden City Council and Mayor Benjamin K. Nadolsky hereby, number one, partner with America 250 Utah; two, recognize the Ogden Weaver America 250 Utah 250 Community Committee as its official committee; three, appoint Councilmember Richard Hayer to serve as a member of the Ogden/Weber America 250/Utah 250 Community Committee; and four, support signature programs of the America 250 Utah Commission; and five, support the Ogden/Weber America 250/Utah 250 Community Committee in its local efforts to educate, engage, and unify Utahns and visitors to Ogden City. There you go.
Thank you. All right, with that, we need a motion.
Chair, I'd make a motion that we adopt proposed joint resolution 2025-5.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Ritchie, second by Councilmember Myers, to adopt the proposed joint resolution. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Aye.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Councilmember Chaburka?
Aye.
Councilmember Graff?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hayer?
Aye.
Chair White?
Aye, that passes. Congratulations, yay.
Chair, I was, I'm really honored to be our committee representative, our council representative on the committee. I am old enough to remember the Sesquicentennial. I was in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania during all of those celebrations back in 1976.
That was the bicentennial.
That was the bicentennial, yeah, that's right. Sorry, but I'm old. I forget those words.
How far back are we going?
Yeah, I forget those words. But anyway, this will be really neat to have, to be able to celebrate this here. And I'm really looking forward to it. So thank you all for your support.
And I would just say, great committee. Awesome people on that committee. So thank you for serving.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you all for your service.
Oh, I didn't even see half those people behind that.
They're all hiding behind.
Behind the post.
Aye, sir.
All right, next on our agenda is the dissolution, dissolution of the expired redevelopment project areas. That's almost as bad.
That's way better. I'm glad Kristi got the tough one there. All right, well, good evening, council members. We're here tonight to ask you to adopt an ordinance officially terminating and dissolving several of our expired redevelopment project areas. The mission of our redevelopment agency is really focused on investing in the catalytic redevelopment of underutilized properties and parcels within the city. We do that with the goal of improving the quality of life for Ogden residents, as well as growing the city's tax base to ensure our long-term financial stability and to allow the city to continue providing the needed services, infrastructure, and so on that our community members require. A key tool of our redevelopment activities is tax increment financing. When we establish a new redevelopment project area, that freezes the base value for the properties within that, within that area. The taxing entities, including the city, the county, and the school district, continue to receive property tax revenues from that base value. We then are able to commit the future growth in property tax revenues to help projects that would not otherwise be financially feasible happen. So that can include things like projects that include structured parking, projects that maybe require an infrastructure upgrade that wouldn't be able to be borne as a project cost alone. So really, the use of TIF allows us to catalyze projects that would not otherwise be feasible. At the end of the project area term, those property tax values within the area have increased. And we see new property tax revenues come into all of our taxing entities. One thing just to note here is that in many of our recent CRAs, we have negotiated participation rates with the other taxing entities that allow them to begin capturing that growth in tax increment earlier on. So for example, a taxing entity might agree to participate at 75%, which means that 25% of the new tax increment will actually flow to the taxing entity while that project area is still in place. So we have five project areas that have expired, three in 2022, and two additional areas just this last year in 2024. So tax increment collection has already ended for these areas. And we're required by state statute to have the council and the RDA board take action to formally terminate and dissolve these areas. You can see the impact that we've seen with these redevelopment project areas with the value increases that are shown on the right-hand side of the screen there. This has been particularly significant for the Lincoln and the Fairmont project areas. I won't go through this in depth, but I also wanted to just point out a couple of key projects that have been possible within these project areas thanks to the use of our redevelopment activities and tools. So these areas include the development of the IRS campus within the Lincoln RDA, as well as the redevelopment of an old vehicle manufacturing plant as new facilities for Auto Leaf and U.S. Foods in the Fairmont RDA. So really, what we see with these project areas, it's not just the growth of the tax base through catalyzing new property investments, but it's also activities that help generate quality jobs for the residents of our community. We can also use these project areas to address things like environmental issues, needed infrastructure upgrades, and so on. So with the dissolution of these five expired areas, we'll have nine active project areas that remain, four of which are scheduled to expire within the next seven years. We also have several new areas that we're looking at in our pipeline. But this is where we'll sit as of today. And then just in closing, I want to really emphasize the impact that our redevelopment project areas have had on Ogden's revitalization over the years. And we see this as remaining really a critical tool that we have as a city to help overcome some of the hurdles that come along with being an older city with older infrastructure and certain development challenges. And also just ensuring that we achieve the level and quality of development that we want to see for our community. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Sarah? All right, no questions. I think we're, we're good.
Chair, I'd make a motion then that we adopt proposed ordinance 2025-25.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Ritchie, second by Councilmember Graff, to adopt proposed ordinance 2025-24. We have a motion by Councilmember Ritchie, second by Councilmember Graff, to adopt proposed ordinance 2025 dash 25. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Councilmember Chaburka?
Aye.
Councilmember Graff?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hayer?
Aye.
Chair White?
Aye, that passes. All right, next on our agenda is public comments. This is an opportunity to address the council regarding any concerns you might have on any topic. Please come up, state your name, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chair, City Council, and members of the Ogden City Executive Staff. My name is Brian Janroy, owner of Apogee Works, aerospace defense firm off of the Ogden Airport. And I wanted to share some insights, some things for you to think about to maintain an open mind as far as the work session you had earlier today. I appreciate the patience. It's a very tedious set of work. The city staff and the shareholders and Brian Conde, your airport director, and the entire team have put a lot of effort into that. And the shareholders, the stakeholders are made up of people way above my pay grade when it comes to the skill sets they bring to this. What I wanted to share was, three and a half years ago, we moved off of the airport. I moved Apogee Works off. We almost left the city. Do the, I'll just call it the climate. And what has happened since the last year is very positive. It's very collaborative. There's a lot of very smart people. I'm not in that category, that have put a lot of effort into that. Leases and the minimum standards are, as it was reported this, at the work session today, are critical to get that back on track. And all I ask is, is that you, as you usually do, I'm sure, keep an open mind. There are some changes proposed that may strike you wrong or difficult to grasp why. I'm not here to propose why they are or not. I just, there's, the consultants on this effort, I'm very impressed with. I'm always very critical of consultants as far as, usually they're trying to pull something out of a box and you should take this and pay us. And this group has not done that. I've watched them now for two years. They've done Salt Lake. I've watched them at Heber. They're open to input. Mary, your leadership in kicking things off and Mary, you being involved all the time along with Jared and the rest of the team is, is vital. It's a really impressive effort because there's so much to do. And when you look at your schedule, the work sessions and the, and the different meetings, that's a lot. And it really is a lot. So all I want to do is let you know from the user standpoint, we really like to move back over to the west area and build 150,000 square foot facility next coming years. And we need the leases and the minimum standard to do that. It's already gonna happen. I just wanted to come up and have that moment with you. Thank you for your time. Any questions? I don't know if questions are appropriate in this.
Thank you. We'd love you to come back. All right.
Bob Hunter, Ogden City. There's a thunderstorm in Idaho, so I didn't have to leave. So I'm here to detain you a little bit longer. So I've just come up with thought after thought tonight. Here's, here's a thought. And I'm kind of glad I stayed because I feel strongly about this issue. And when Councilmember Graff talked about, you know, you, you have the power to control what goes on in this city, but you also have a voice. You are the voice of one of Utah's great communities. And there are some things happening with climate change and with the weather out there. And people in high places are totally disregarding some of that stuff. They're, they're cutting back on, and in some cases, simply abolishing weather services and research on climate and that sort of thing. And I know that if somebody says the word "climate change," it's kind of polarizing. Nevertheless, there's something happening out there and we shouldn't keep our, put our heads in the sand. We need to recognize it and do something about it. And if you don't call it "climate change," at least talk to people in high places about recognizing the need for scientific climate research and keeping our weather services in place and that sort of thing. And again, you, you are the spokespeople for our community. And we're one of Utah's great cities. And I would encourage you to, in any way that you can come together, you know? I know there are political differences among all groups, but to use your voice and address that with, with Congress. We have six members of Congress from Utah, and there's only one of them. And thank goodness for him, and that's Senator John Curtis, who is willing to address those kinds of issues. And he, with his amazing peacemaking personality, I think he'll make some, I think he'll be able to make some progress. But your voice would count with those other members of the congressional delegation. And I hope you'll recognize your power and use it in that direction. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. We have a hand online, Julian Snyder?
Hey, I'm Julian Snyder. I'm an Ogden resident. I just wanted to also address, I guess, the water-wise ordinance that was adopted. I wanted to thank the councilman who made some comments, I think I heard it was Councilman Graff from the previous gentleman's comments. I, you covered a lot of what, what my thoughts were, so I won't repeat them. But I do just want to speak from a homeowner's perspective, a little bit of a lower income side, so I don't know if that's a part of it. But there's a lot of daily life, having a young family and having expensive housing. My mortgage payment is already so high. And I, I recognize that this doesn't change, you know, that this is focused on new builds. But not being able to do, hardly being able to keep up with a lot of normal life and then to have a lot of specific requirements and not be able to do with my house what I want to do, what I think is most beautiful. I agree, there are a lot of benefits to having grass. A lot of cities are actually looking into that, to encouraging grass and because that does help keep things cooler, it helps hold water, prevent floods. I'm not an expert on the topic, but I appreciate the comments that were made. And then I did notice that it went into a seven-zero vote in the affirmative. So I would just encourage councilmembers too to be willing to vote no on something, even if that means you're not all in agreement. And, and I'm not trying to say that anything different happened, but yeah, there's, there's a lot going on in daily life. And if, if we have nitty, nitpicky ordinances telling other people what they can do with their property because of how we feel about what their house looks like, I don't think that's something that we should start getting into. That's all.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Laura Lewis again. I did appreciate Councilman Graff's comments too. He had the data to support what he was saying. And the very numbers show, 8%, we are not going to fill the Great Salt Lake. And I've lost so many trees in my yard because I don't water. And it gets to the point, you think, I'm giving up my yard and the quality of life that I have because my lawn's brown, it's not pleasant to be outside. There are more to, and grass has value. There's, it's a filtering, it does a lot of things, like I brought up erosion, things like that. When you're on a hill, and a lot of our homes on the bench are on hills, things go downhill. It filters out a lot of pollutants and things like that. So there's advantages to it. So you can't just totally get rid of it. Maybe what we need to look at is more efficient types of grass or native grasses or something that might be a little more tolerant of drought. And ground covers, I have a garden, but I always use a, I hate to admit it, plastic as a water barrier, I mean, as a mulch kind of thing, because it'll keep the water in. So I have to water my garden less. But there's other ways to do it without banning everything. I think it's, it needs more research before we make blanket decisions on how we're going to use our water resources and the quality of life, like I say. I'm sure that woman that smoke has small children. She'd like a yard. A lot of people spend time in the yards. Me and my neighbors, we use our yards. It's an extension of our home. So when you start telling us we can't have anything but rocks and dirt, it's, it's, like I say, it limits your quality of life. And everybody has different priorities. I have, I had another home where they just didn't do anything as part of their contribution to water usage. They didn't water anything and had three feet of, of dry grass everywhere. Then I, on the other side, I had a front yard full of rocks. So there's got to be something in between that works for everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Hi, Travis Pete. I want to talk primarily, every time I see the RDA sign come up and say the purpose of the cultural and historic resources, and yet then we somehow continue to keep ignoring those in favor of just of random build. I suggested a revolving loan fund years ago, such as for Slackwater Pizza. It's in allowed use, so it's a one-story building, that's it. When they get ready to build anything new, they'll bulldoze it and build up something else. And yet I'd suggested simply that we, as a city, pay them, similar to what we did with Ogden Blue. We said, hey, we'll finance you at a lower rate and you build a second floor to your 25th Street building. It would have been pretty easy for CURE Development to engineer a second and third floor for that building, or at least the structure that would support a second and third floor so that reuse is already built, planted into the building. If Weaver State Science Building was a foot and a half taller, floor to floor, they wouldn't have had to bulldoze it. But because it wasn't, there's no reuse. And so if you look at their campus builds and everything else, they now have been engineering their buildings for reuse purposes so that they can technically gut a building and reuse it without having to do the entire external infrastructure again. And yet I was ignored. And, and yet that's where Fred Kiesel built his original failed rebuild building, which was four stories tall. So I really have a hard time, especially when we start financing, such as Adams Avenue, it wasn't addressed last week. The Adams Avenue CRA ends right where Mr. Fisher's property ends. And we have William K.'s Residence immediately south of that. The founder of Kaysville, four generations in the same family. And yet we're gonna build a 10-story bank of structure right next to it and use Adams Avenue CRA and TIF funding to block heritage, to block history. The encroachment of the Central Business District into the East Bench Residential Area continues. The gymnasium, desert gym block was rezoned and it basically said, oh, well, we want to put five stories and six stories on this property. But we didn't, we had six months to take it to the planning commission. And yet this body approved it and said, oh yeah, let's go ahead and put five stories on the desert gym block, even though there's no history of that, without it going to the planning commission. And so we have checks and balances that you expect of us, but you don't expect the same of yourself. And that's to be a tragedy and a sadness that when you can continue to encroach into history and take the, even like the job service. The original job, job service was designed by John Pierce. Quaint fit the neighborhood. The new job service, boom, right to the sky. And so I, I think that we need to look and draw urban growth boundaries, but we also need to draw business growth boundaries and say, what is the best? Thank you.
Thanks, Travis. Any other comments? All right, seeing no movement, we'll move on to the next comments from the mayor. Oh, wait, let me see, sorry. I just want to thank, first of all, Brian, I, I agree, the Title VIII has been in need of something for quite some time. So I'm, I'm glad that there's movement on that. Seeing if there are any questions throughout that. All right, seeing no other questions, comments from the mayor.
Thank you. I want to thank you for your support of Chief Slater. Really looking forward to the future of Ogden Fire Department under his leadership. And really, I do appreciate your support of him. I was sitting in this meeting and reflecting on some past experience I've had in, in your chairs. And I don't know how many years ago it was that I felt like we were placed in an impossible position where changes to Title VIII were placed before us. And it was, it's really technical information. Managing airports, really technical. It's hard to wrap your mind around all of it, but especially in a short amount of time. But at that time, I really felt like I was put in a challenging position to make a good decision. It was, you either chose those that are affected by the decision or you chose those that were proposing the decision, and it just was terrible. And either way, it was gonna create contention. And that's, that's kind of the era and the dynamic of the past. And I think that we need to remember that because that's what we have worked our guts out to remove ourselves from. And that, I appreciated Brian's comments because I think we're taking for granted just how far we've come and how hard it has been to get to this point. And we're not asking for changes to the ordinance for, to gain power or to wrestle power away. We're asking for the ability to succeed and we appreciate the effort you guys are gonna put into understanding where we're coming from on that. We'll be sure to put some examples in front of you so that you can see kind of the, the ways in which the current approach has held us back. And frankly, is part of why we are where we are. And we're not the only airport that has struggled from this. It has been the same case at other airports across the country. That's why this is recommendation before is becoming, has become best, best practices. And that's why we hired the best, and that's why we engaged with the airport's best. And that's why we have our best staff working on putting the best recommendation forward for you. So please, if you have questions, let us know. We're happy to answer them in the work session. We're happy to take calls with whatever questions you have. Just know that progress has been stalled long enough. And there have, it's been interesting because we're, it just seems like we're at a point where we're holding back and just saying, please wait to invest in us while we get these things in order. I mean, you heard what Brian wants to do. And we're like, please, please stay patient and let us get these things done. That's the dynamic we've placed ourselves in now. And that is an incredible luxury. And it is not a luxury that happened by happenstance. It's a luxury and a position that has happened with absolute effort, unbending and undying effort and willingness to collaborate and to listen and to give and to take. And I just want to, to tell you that I would never put you guys in the position that I was placed in alongside some of you. I'm gonna put you in a better position to help Ogden succeed than, than I felt like we were that night. Because we owe that to you and we owe it to Ogden. And I also want to say that I considered a lot of the things before that was discussed tonight before the ordinance was placed before you for the, for turf and water conservation. I think you guys know my background on the, on the lake and how many years of my life I've given to the lake and to the wetlands and to wildlife that surround us. And what we put before you is, is a lot of progress. It's just, it's more than a step in the right direction. It's a, it's a big step in the right direction. It's a step that, that I thought we've needed to take for a while. And it's hard these days because I feel like we're living in a world where it's, it's either give or it's take or it's all or it's nothing. or it's all or it's nothing. And I just want to tell you and thank you for taking a positive step toward progress. We took a positive step. We made progress tonight. If there's more we can do, we will, and we can. But let's not let perfection stop us from making progress. And same sentiment for the airport, same sentiment for Ogden, same sentiment that I relayed in my guest editorial is we just live in a time where everybody thinks that everything's going to happen overnight, and it just ain't that way, not when you're in the trenches. It is an absolute grind managing our way through these things. And I'm trying like hell. You know, at some point, we've got to recognize that we're making progress. And that has to be the mantra, progress over perfection. And if we continue to press the pedal toward progress, whether it's in our professional growth and our city's growth and development as our, in the policies that we adopt, et cetera, if we never stop making progress, we will lead toward absolute greatness. And that will continue to be the mantra from our administration. We're going to continue to put proposals before you that continue to move the needle and continue to move us toward where we all know we can be. And I promise you, not any one of them is going to get us there all in one shot. Okay? Thanks, you guys.
Thanks, Mayor. Comments from councils?
Madam Chair, I'd like to recognize a religious hero from our community that's here tonight, Bishop Bobby R. Allen. He will be celebrating his 25th year serving as a jurisdictional bishop for the Church of God in Christ. Thirty?
Oh, my gosh.
You got to correct your Facebook page out of Griffin Memorial Church of God in Christ because it says 25 years. That was a past one? That was a past one. Ooh, sorry about that.
Thirty-second.
Madam Chair, may I invite Bishop Bobby Allen to come up to address us? He is celebrating a momentous occasion this month. And it will be pretty awesome. Is it the 21st, Bishop Allen, that is your, 23rd of August?
Come up to the podium, please.
Mr. Myers already stated my name. I'm Bobby R. Allen. And I've passed at Griffin Memorial right across to Biadoc for 30 years. I am pasted in Salt Lake City since 2018. I have passed it for 45 years, 45-year celebration. Thirty-two years as jurisdiction bishop in the Church of God in Christ. Eighty-seven years tomorrow in age. And 10 years married to my present wife. And that celebration will be on August 23rd. Amen.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank each of you. And thank the mayor. I want to thank the mayor and also thank Mr. Myers for attending our 87th Holy Convocation this past June. June started on the 17th through the 22nd. And we really appreciate them. And want to welcome all of you. Welcome to attending our Holy Convocation. We're 87 years here in Utah with the Church of God in Christ. And we hold it right across to Biadoc at 2424 E. Avenue. Every year, right after Father's Day, Tuesday, whatever the day deals at Tuesday, through the following Sunday, fourth Sunday each year. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bishop Allen.
Thank you.
Could I add to that?
Sure.
If anybody has an opportunity to worship with them, I highly recommend it. We went the first night, I brought my wife, and we were so moved and the energy was so good, we came the next night with our kids. And they loved it as well. It's a very welcoming place. It's a little intimidating, admittedly, at first, but I quickly learned that we don't need to feel that way. They're very warm, very welcoming. They'll wrap their arms around you and share nothing but love and energy, good energy with everybody that's there.
Great.
And Madam Chair, one of the things that I love about going out to the Griffin Memorial Church of God in Christ is when they preach, they bring the Spirit down from heaven and they bring it right to your soul. And it is beautiful and it's inspiring, and the music is outstanding. It's toe-tapping, good music, so good gospel music. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments?
I, it's not going to rise to that level. It's not nearly that fun to talk about. But I, you know, I kind of wanted to address a little bit of our airport discussion. I kind of recognize the necessity that we do some things in a very proactive way there. I'm grateful that we've gotten good consultants and some professional people that can bring their insight to this discussion. I do anticipate it's going to be a little while. I mean, it is a pretty major foundational change to the way we've been doing things. So I'm looking forward to those discussions. Appreciate Glenn and his desire to be involved. And I know it's not really his language that he talks, so it's probably easy to glaze over on some of those things, but appreciate him trying to do what he's doing out there. But I think our airport is an absolute gem. And we, it's got so much great potential. And we've got to exploit that as best we can. And that is with partnering with the people that also love it and to move it in a very positive, forward direction. So I'm looking forward to the discussions going forward. As far as water goes, I think we did make progress tonight. I, it's, and it's my personal opinion. I don't want to impose it on anybody else. But I think we do need to do what we need to do to get people to qualify for those grants, those grant funds. I think there will be a lot more people that will appreciate that than people that will feel penalized because they can't tear up their lawn grass and bring it back to lawn grass at some point. I just think we need to recognize that we do need to start to be more conscious with our water use. Absolutely, changing pipes is going to save a lot more water in the long run. But in order to be a good steward, we need to be doing individual things as well. And it is hard. I mean, I went and looked for some of those water-wise plantings to put in my strip. And, you know, it's a lot of money. And the flip-your-strip money doesn't cover it all, so you're still going to have to put some skin in the game. But it makes it where you can do it if you're motivated enough. Just on a lighter note, I went and bought a rain barrel this spring from the program. And I'm doing some, I'm spending this summer, I've got a weather station at my house, and I'm measuring the amount of rain I get and measuring the amount of water that gets in that rain bucket. And I talked with, oh, his name just slipped my mind, our sustainability guy. Lorenzo, yeah. And we're consulting about this to see if we can make sure that people understand what they can do, how much a rain barrel will save over a season versus... I'm a big proponent of smart sprinkler controllers. And at my house, we've also put in a, there's different brands. The one I put in was, it's called a Flow by Moen. And it meters all the water that comes in. It learns how we use water and shows us how we can conserve in our own use. And we've been able to bring our water use down a long way just by knowing how much water we're using and for what. And if the city is going to supplement or encourage, you know, monetarily, I think we can do a lot better than rain barrels by using smart sprinkler controllers and for people who are motivated to conserve these devices that you can put on your water line and it will monitor your use. There's other brands, so I don't want to promote one over the other. But there's ways to be a lot better steward of the water that we have in this area. And I think we need to do that, to recognize that we just don't have as much water as we used to have and we don't have as much water as 48 other states. So there, that's my pitch.
Just real quick, I, again, I'm excited to learn more about the changes with the airport. I just want to commend Mayor Nedolski and the team with, I mean, when I started in the council, the voices that were talking against each other seem to now be more in harmony. And I think there's been a lot of hard work put towards that. And so I think we just need to recognize that as we move forward with this discussion. And like I say, it's a lot to take in, so I'm excited to learn more.
Great. I just, I have a comment. So as the mayor's wife calls it, it's silly season. And I, we, some of us were at the Weaver Women's, Weaver County League of Women Voters Forum the other night. They were hosting a candidate's forum. And I just, I wanted to say, I was really, really disappointed in one of the candidates that got up and did a homophobic slur in this public space. And I was really disappointed because this was a place for us to be able to educate and have a civic dialogue about who we are and what we stand for and just genuinely educating the community. And it just, it just really made me really, made me angry because, you know, words that stir up this disrespect and demean others, I just don't think it has a place in Ogden. And I was just really super disappointed. And it was done, or I don't know why it was done. I really don't know if it was done out of cruelty or if it was done out of, you know, some shock value. But man, it just stirred up not only, you know, bad feelings for the person that it was directed towards, but it also just weakened that person's argument of what they were trying to make. And I just think, just disparaging comments just don't have a place here. And I just really encourage all of us to remember that we can disagree and that we can do it very passionately. And, but we can do it without, you know, tearing each other up. And I'll be the first to say, I'm not perfect. I know I have, at times, said bad things, but I vow to keep working on it. And I just hope all of us up here continue to do that, too, because I want to be a better person. I want to be able to disagree. And as somebody said, even, you know, just because we have a 7-0 vote doesn't mean that that didn't get there without disagreeing along the way and coming to some compromise. And so that's all I want to say. And, you know, I just want to be able to say that we can disagree better.
Thank you, Chair.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, motion to adjourn. Most, by Vice Chair Hayer, second by, I almost called you Chair Ritchie, Councilmember Ritchie, this is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We have one more quick board member, or Special Redevelopment Agency meeting. So don't leave yet.
She meant us, not you all. You all can leave.
Y'all can leave. You don't have to stay.
Except Sarah.
I'm so sorry.
Sarah has to stay. And Jason.
No, I can just see all of us up here are starting to close their stuff up. So I'm just waiting for Jason to... All right. All right. Good evening and welcome to the Special Redevelopment Agency meeting of July 15, 2025. Please note that all board members are present. The next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes, the regular meeting of May 13, 2025. Board Member Myers.
Madam Chair, I did thoroughly review those minutes and found them to be very accurate, to the best of my knowledge. So I would like to approve that the, make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Board Member Myers, second by, Myers, second by Board Member Ritchie. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, next on the agenda is report from administration. We're back at the dissolution of the expired redevelopment project areas.
I was just too eager to hop up here and say dissolution again. But this is the same item that was presented in the council meeting, so I'll just reference that presentation from the earlier meeting and note that we're requesting the RDA Board's adoption of a resolution to formally terminate and dissolve the five expired RDA project areas. I'm happy to take questions on that.
Any questions for Sarah? No, it's just fun to hear sometimes that they expire.
They do.
All right. And this is not a public input or hearing, so.
Chair, I'd make a motion then that we adopt proposed Resolution 2025-14.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Hayer, second by Board Member Graff to adopt proposed Resolution 2025-14. This is a roll call vote.
Board Member Chaburka?
Aye.
Board Member Graff?
Aye.
Board Member Myers?
Aye.
Board Member Ritchie?
Aye.
Board Member Blair?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hayer?
Aye.
Chair White?
Aye, that passes. Comments from the executive director?
Nothing at the time, thank you.
Any comments from board members?
Motion to adjourn.
All right. We have a motion by Board Member Ritchie, second by Vice Chair Hayer to adjourn. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.